Good evening, welcome.
Good evening and welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the City Council meeting for Thursday, July 18th, 2024, for the Community Playmaker Community of the Year. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands on day and under God and to this world with good justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Miskin, Mayor Abou Osley?
Here.
Ms. Metzer?
Here.
Mr. Brand?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Thank you. At this moment in time, we have a moment of silence. Thank you. First item on the agenda this evening is a proclamation for National Disability Independence Day, July 26, 2024. I'll come down to the front and we have Sherri Ross here to accept the proclamation with Definitely Dogs. Okay. And a special guest.
Yes, more important.
Can introduce our guest? Okay. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act was signed into law on July 26, 1990, by President George H. W. Bush as the nation's first comprehensive law prohibiting discrimination against persons with disabilities and guaranteeing them the same opportunities as all other people. Whereas the ADA helps to overcome barriers that persons with disabilities face every day and addresses issues such as narrow doorways and small bathroom stalls and improves mobility and safety. And whereas the ADA protects persons with disabilities from discrimination and provides them with better access to goods and services, as well as ensuring equal access to telecommunications, healthcare, transportation, and social services. And whereas National Disability Independence Day not only celebrates the signing of the ADA, but also celebrates the independence of persons with disabilities and their accomplishments and contributions to our nation and our city. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abou Osley, Mayor of the City of Marion, do hereby proclaim July 26, 2024, as National Disability Independence Day in the City of Marion and encourage all residents to become more aware of the barriers faced by persons with disabilities and work to eliminate such barriers. There you go.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted just to say a brief word. Thank you very much for this proclamation. Definitely Dogs works diligently to assist people with disabilities to live a more independent life. We work with a lot of combat veterans, a lot of first responders, as well as hearing impaired. And we are amazed and humbled by the abilities that these dogs are able to provide their people that make their, they enable them through their training and skills and their bond. And definitely Dogs is privileged and honored to be part and able to work with these amazing animals. And thank you very much for acknowledging the work that these dogs do for their people in the community. Appreciate you. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to introduce the most important person because I don't matter. Hey, buddy, excuse me. So this is Dewey. He is not only my service dog, but he does a lot of advocacy work for Definitely Dogs. So if I ever come out and speak, he'll come with me. So he comes out, he represents what a true service dog should act and behave like in public. So, thank you, everybody. You ready? You hid behind the podium. Come on.
Thank you. Before our first public forum this evening, I want to review the rules for procedure for our public forums. The first public forum at the beginning of the meeting is for comments from the public related to agenda items that are not associated with the public hearing. The second public forum at the end of the meeting is for comments on any topic from the public. And please understand that no action can be taken or will be taken on comments made during the public forum, the second public forum, because of our open meetings restrictions. The rules for procedure are, there are yellow comment cards at the end of the table. We ask everyone who is going to be addressing council to please fill out the card and turn it into the city clerk when you come forward to speak. Please do not approach the dais. If you have handouts, please submit them to the city clerk for distribution to the council. Once you're called forward, you're encouraged to state your name and your group affiliation. Please remember that all people addressing the council have five minutes to make their comments. Please don't repeat anything that's been said by others previously in the interest of time. Speakers should not engage in conduct or speech that is imminently threatening or incites violence or which is obscene. Please keep all comments regarding the issue at hand and please refrain from disparaging any individual. And speakers and attendees of the meeting should not engage in conduct that disrupts the orderly progress of the meeting or in speech or conduct which interferes with others' ability to participate in the meeting. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in removal from the meeting. Appreciate everyone following those procedures and we'll proceed to the first public forum, which is a time that is set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic that is listed on the agenda but is not associated with the public hearing. Any comments related to an item that is associated with the public hearing, there'll be time for those during the public hearing. So is there anyone here to address council on any topic that is on the agenda but is not part of a public hearing? Please come forward. Okay. Do we have a comment for the public forum portion from outside the meeting?
Yes, we had one comment submitted in advance of the meeting. This is related to the annexation item under the consent agenda. It's from Amy Bishop. She just shared some water drainage concerns about that property and requested that it be reviewed by both city and county staff.
Okay. Seeing that no one else is, no one's coming forward to address council, we'll close this part of the meeting and proceed to the consent agenda. Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda as follows. This will be items A1 through F1, Resolution 32014 through 32021.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F1, Resolutions 32014 through 32021. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. The next item in the agenda under the regular agenda is an appeal hearing regarding the denial of golf cart license. So do we just open the hearing and?
You'll open the hearing and then staff will provide facts of the item. Then you'll give the person who appealed the opportunity to speak.
All right, so the hearing is now open and we'll have the presentation from the staff. The chief, okay?
I guess it is. We received a request to issue a golf cart permit for somebody here in town. Our current ordinance states that you have to have a valid driver's license and a disability in order to receive that. We followed that ordinance. We've only issued three that I know of. We've got three current ones. One was issued in 2017, one 2018, and one is a recurring one. All of those are related to disability or mobility issues. This request was for convenience only and I denied it. The individual requested to appeal it to the council.
Okay. Do we have anything to add from the city attorney at all?
No, my recommendation is also to deny the appeal or as stated in the agenda to affirm the staff's denial. If we were going to reverse and allow this, we would have to modify the ordinance first. That would take three readings. So I would then recommend that we also would table this until we could in the future.
Okay. Are there any questions for Chief or Kara? Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah. Rachel, you pointed me to the, I think it is, state DOT language that uses the phraseology, persons with disability identification. In our case, it says device, but it lists several things. So what I just wanted to confirm, our language is tying back to what the DOT's requirements are. And so there's not any, there's not any dissimilarity between what we're saying and what DOT says.
That is correct.
Okay. I care to use, I see it the same way?
I do see it the same way.
Okay.
I, Rachel and I have also discussed clarifying the language and the code so that should this come up in the future, it's very clear where the modifiers are and what the process is.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Is the appellant in the room and would they like to address the council on this item? They're not? Okay, any further discussion on this item? Okay, then we'll close the appeal hearing.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion affirming staff's denial of golf cart license, and this is brought by Dustin Raway.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to affirm the staff's denial of the golf cart license. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to affirm the staff's denial of the golf cart license by Mr. Roway, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. The next item is a public hearing on the establishment of the 2024 Eighth Avenue multifamily housing urban revitalization area and urban revitalization plan. Public hearing is now open and we have a presentation?
Yes, Your Honor. We are looking to create a new urban revitalization area to support two projects that were awarded federal community development block grants for disaster relief. There are two incentives being provided in this urban renewal area and plan. One is for rehabilitation and additions with an incentive of 10 years, 100% abatement, and new construction, an incentive of 10 years, 75% abatement. Creation of the area does not obligate the city to provide the incentive. Rather, it allows for eligible properties to submit an application and effective July 1, 2024, any first time application, the school's portion of the levy cannot be abated. That was all passed with House File 718, recent change.
Okay. We'll come back to questions after we take the comments of the public. All right, at this time, the public hearing is open. If there, anyone is here to address the council, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward. Did we receive any comments outside the meeting?
I have not received any.
No.
Okay. None? Okay, please note that for the record. We'll close the public hearing and proceed to the resolutions.
Yes, Your Honor. I move, I move to approve Resolution Number 32022, adopting the proposed plan for the 2024 Eighth Avenue multifamily housing urban revitalization area.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 32022, adopting the proposed plan for the 2024 Eighth Avenue multifamily housing urban revitalization area. Any discussion? Questions for staff? None?
No.
Okay, I'll go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I think it's important, what are the two projects that are encompassed in this or will be benefiting from this?
Two projects. First one will be Bell Tower Lofts, the former Methodist church. And the second one will be Hoth Flats, which is on the parking lot of northeast corner 10th Street and Eighth Avenue.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks. I thought that was important to have for the record. Thank you.
Okay, so. All right, well, go ahead and vote. All those in favor of Resolution Number 32022, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Will someone make the motion?
I'll do that as well, Your Honor. Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance Number 24-08, designating an area of Marion, Iowa, as the 2024 Eighth Avenue multifamily housing urban revitalization area. This is our initial consideration.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the initial consideration of ordinance Number 24-08, designating an area of Marion as the 2024 Eighth Avenue multifamily housing urban revitalization area? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving ordinance Number 24-08, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. The next item is a public hearing on Urban Renewal Plan Amendment for the Central Corridor Urban Renewal Area. Public hearing is now open. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, Your Honor. This is a urban renewal plan amendment, again, to amend this, to include the same two projects, Bell Tower Lofts and Hoth Flats, because the CDBGD DR grant is a 20-year grant. We are contemplating a 10-year abatement followed by a 10-year TIF. So in following that process, this amendment amends in the two projects, Bell Tower Lofts and Hoth Flats, with the maximum TIF for a Bell Tower of 475,000 and a maximum TIF for Hoth Flats of 450,000. Again, this does not obligate the city. There would be a following, following this action, there would be a public hearing process and a development agreement.
Okay. Is there anyone here to address council, either in favor or in opposition to this measure? Please come forward. Did we receive any comments outside the meeting?
I have not received any.
I have not as well.
Please note that for the record. We'll close the public hearing and proceed to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 32023, approving urban renewal plan amendment for the Central Corridor Urban Renewal Area.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 32023, approving the urban renewal plan amendment for the Central Corridor Urban Renewal Area. Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Questions for staff? Go ahead.
Yeah, Leanne, do we have any sense of the timing of the development agreements being worked on and pandered for our consideration?
We actually have the Bell Tower Lofts draft agreement in hands right now with the plans to communicate and provide it to the developer for review and comment this and next week. Hoth Flats is going through a process for an economic development agreement with IEDA first, so that one's still at least a month or two out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 32023, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 32024, approving a one-year suspension of civil service hiring requirements for police officers.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 32024, approving the one-year suspension of civil service hiring requirements for police officers. Discussion? Go ahead.
Chief, if I understand this correctly, this is, this is new, I guess, requirement or opportunity that was worked, acted on by the legislature? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Came out of the last session, the governor signed it. Again, it's just going to give us the ability to kind of expedite our hiring.
Sure.
I think they recognize the challenges all agencies are facing right now.
And it doesn't change the requirements or?
No requirements changed.
Qualifications.
Testing qualifications. We're not going to lower standards. We just, it avoids us having to get an approved hiring list and maintain that list and exhaust the list. We can do an ongoing application process. We'll test every month and we'll hire people as we go.
So do we think that other communities are going to adopt this as they look forward?
Yes, sir, I do. I think it put us in a very awkward position or bad position if the council didn't approve this.
All right, thanks.
Steve?
Yeah, I think the two things we talked about on Tuesday night that are important to make sure they're on the record, one is it's anticipated the hiring span will take instead of from four to five months, that'll be shortened to two to three months. So to me, that's very important as well. But the other one is if other cities throughout the state are going to be doing this and they're hiring in two to three months, people that are on your list for four to five months are going to be taking jobs elsewhere, and so you're not going to have any chance at probably getting the best candidate. So in my opinion, with this change by the legislature, it's imperative that we move ahead of that. And to me, it makes a lot of sense because I always thought the old method going through civil service has been a lot more antiquated based upon today's society on how you need to be mobile and flexible in how you hire.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions? Question? Okay, we'll vote all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 32024. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to direct staff to draft an ordinance related to artist live work regulations within the U1 Uptown Zoning District, currently within a commercial development moratorium subject area.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to draft an ordinance related to artist live work regulations within the U1 Uptown Zoning District. Discussion?
So, Your Honor?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Dave, I want to just tie back to our works session discussion. How does this, how does this interface then with our moratorium on the comprehensive plan?
Again, more, just a little, taking a step back, moratorium will expire at the end of October, early November. During that time, we, of course, work on the comprehensive plan. We're not quite halfway through that process, a little less than halfway. As we work through the comprehensive plan, that plan will help us establish not just land use, but goals, policies, and objectives. Basically, here's your roadmap to grow, what steps we need to take, what ordinances we should adopt. As part of that comp plan, they'll be focused on the uptown along with the rest of the city. And they'll give us some guidance in terms of, yes, you should have housing stock uptown, but what does that housing stock look like? What is recommended, what is not to create that diverse housing? So as we're working through that plan, I suspect, and I know, live work, traditional apartments, studios, rental owner occupied, will all be elements of strategies that the plan will lay out and give us guidance and direction on from that plan, then a council's direction will start. We'll go through that, that list of goals and objectives and figure out what's the next step.
So this, this would be done synchronized with that work effort you just outlined?
This will come as a, this, this work on a live work regulations will come as a result of the recommendations from that plan. So it'll, 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 it'll probably broadly state, kind of building off our current plan, is that Marion shall encourage a diverse housing stock across the community, but also in the uptown. It'll give those recommendations. Is live work a recommendation that should be perceived, that we should proceed with as part of those recommendations? If it does, then we'll proceed at that point in time following direction from the council.
And can you just clarify live work?
Sure. I'm going to give it the, I'll give the definition, the true definition. And if we want to simplify it a little more, I can. It's a floor area used or designed to be used as both a dwelling unit and a place of work by an artist, artisan, or crafts person, including persons engaged in the application, teaching, or performance of fine arts, including but not limited to drawing, vocal, or instrumental music, painting, sculpture, and writing. That is out of our current code.
And does that differ in any way from living in a space that's also, I mean, living and working in a space, like in my mind, is different from living and running a business in a space, like a retail business? Is there a differentiation of that?
Most codes, oh, sorry, not most, many codes differentiate. They don't call it artist live work. It's just live work flat. They don't, they don't get into the art, you know, the art teaching element. They just say you live and work in the same space regardless of what you do for work. It's just a live work.
And if this doesn't proceed, you know, and according to this request to move it ahead of the process for the comprehensive plan update, it's not, it's not, I think this was brought up on Tuesday, it's not prohibiting the operation of a business in that space.
Correct, 100%.
Saying you can't live in that business.
Correct. The whole, this business or any business, you can use 100 square feet or you can use the whole building for commercial activity. You just cannot have that living space shared specifically on the first floor or like integrated into a mezzanine or just actually literally integrated into the business itself.
Yes. Yeah. So Dave, I guess as I'm, staff recommendation is not to proceed at this time with developing this, but it could then be undertaken at a later point in time based on the output of the comprehensive plan work.
Correct.
Okay, so it's really a timing issue.
It truly is a timing issue. I mean, take the moratorium out of it. Even with the comprehensive plan, this would be something we'd want to definitely.
Address.
Address, maybe not specifically live work, but that diversified housing stock in the uptown.
So that body of work on the comprehensive plan may indicate a pathway for something like this to proceed, or it may not have a pathway for something like this.
That is correct.
Okay, so what this is? Okay. So what this is really doing is, is let you get through the soak cycle on this and then address this specific issue.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good way to, a good way to put it. And I, I just, I do want to add before, I did, Gay is not in attendance. She did reach out to me. She, she did ask for the Zoom link. She's on vacation this week and was unable to attend, and attend this meeting and make any comments, so.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion questions? Okay. And we'll go ahead and vote all those in favor of the motion to direct staff to draft an ordinance relating to artist live work regulations within the U One Uptown Zoning District. Please say aye. All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay. The motion is not approved. For the final item, before the public forum, I will turn the meeting over to the mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan, did you like to introduce this discussion?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Excuse me. Earlier this week, we received a request from the Lynn County Gaming Association for a letter of support for their impending application to the Iowa Racing and Gaming Commission. We have representative of the board, Todd Bergen, here to speak with the council.
Welcome, Todd. Yeah, name and address would be great.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Todd Bergen. My address is thirty-one ninety Old Orchard Road in Cedar Rapids. I am with Skogman Commercial, but in this, for this meeting, I'm representing the Lynn County Gaming Association. The, I think you probably all know the history, maybe you don't know all of the history of gaming and, and the lengthy process that's been followed through the years to try to bring a casino to the area, specifically to the Cedar Rapids Lynn County area. In 2021, there was a moratorium passed that effectively shut down new applications for gaming operations in Iowa, and that moratorium was just lifted as of July first. At that time, the, the casino operators and, and the Lynn County Gaming Association as a co-applicant decided to formally approach the Iowa Racing and Gaming Commission about a new application. I can go into some detail about the casino itself, although I don't represent the casinos, so I can't go into a lot of detail. A lot of that detail you've probably read already in the paper, if you paid attention at all to what's been proposed. What I want to talk about today is the Lynn County Gaming Association relationship and what the, what the license will do for the mission that we bring to the table. I, I should also say that the request we're making of Marion is a request we're making of many other jurisdictions, many not-for-profits, many for-profit businesses. We do want to show a base of support for the effort so that when we make our application, that we can demonstrate a significant support. So the Lynn County Gaming Association is effectively a not-for-profit, and if the casino is successful in, in getting a gaming license after it is constructed, there will be a portion of the, the revenue that is then generated back to our association, and that, those proceeds will be used for not-for-profit organizations in Lynn County and in surrounding counties. The, some of you may know, when I was at Transamerica, I was in charge of the Foundation of Transamerica for this area. And, and also during that time, I was on the Hall Prime Foundation Committee Board as it, as it stands today. Through those, those efforts, I was able to actually see firsthand all of the need in the community for not-for-profits. This, this is a unique opportunity for us to add significant support for not-for-profits in Lynn County and frankly, surrounding counties. There will be a portion that will, a minimum portion that will be allocated to adjacent counties as well. Specifically, the process as it stands now, the reason why we're coming quickly today is because we want to make our application by the end of the month if possible, sometime in August. There's a process that the commission has established for review of that application. They will make a decision in February about whether or not they want to grant a license to, to the casino operators and to Lynn County Gaming Association. The casino itself, I think you all, you might know, is going to, will be located on, was typically called the Coopers Mill Site, which is to the west of where, where Pickle Palace and the new buildings are down on First Avenue and First Street. That's an area that was devastated by the flood in 2008. It has, it's mainly vacant for many, many years. And with, based, based on my background in economic development, urban planning, and in, now in commercial real estate, the prospects for development in that property are, are not significant. This investment in and of itself will revitalize the neighborhood that has, in my opinion, has very, has less opportunity than other parts of the community, especially because it's more the urban core. So the, the plan by the, by the casino operators is to invest $250 million in a gaming and entertainment facility. During that process, they expect to have, of course, while it's under construction, those jobs will have a little, but upwards of a thousand construction jobs over the course of the project. When it is under, in operation, they expect to employ 350 people in various positions. I don't have that detail, of course, because they're working on the application. I'm not part of that process. So all in all, again, when I was in economic development, this would have been a very exciting investment for the region, a very exciting job creation opportunity for the region. I do understand because of my background that the impact of any investment, whether it's Prospect Meadows or whether it is this, this prospect or this project or Sub-Zero out by the airport, all of those investments have regional impact. And maybe local investments, but they have regional impact. This is a significant project for this region, and we would appreciate a letter of support from the City of Marion.
Thank you, Todd.
Any questions?
Yeah, any questions?
Yeah, Todd, I think one of the key things I would look at, one of the first things I looked at and asked for the information for was how did Marion vote on this casino license issue four years ago? So I got that information. It was basically 53% in favor. So that was a good piece of information to have. The other piece I, I, that would interest me, and I think the citizens in Lynn County and Marion as well, is there an anticipation that there would be a demographic representation on this group that will be doing the nonprofit distributions? My understanding is that may, as you said, may, maybe five to six million dollars a year? So is that going to be a demographic representation across the communities in Lynn County?
Yeah, I think every effort will be made to create diversity, though. You can imagine that there are dozens and dozens of communities that would want to be represented. So it's something that we take seriously. We have representation now on the current committee. Murphy McGrath, by the way, is here with me. Murphy's also on our committee. Anne Parmley, who's from Marion, is the, is the chair, president of the committee. She's not in town today. She should be making this presentation. Sorry, you had to settle for me. We have representation from Palo Center Point. So even, even the, the organization as it stands today has some representation outside of Cedar Rapids. We do understand that that's something that's important to Lynn County, and we need to strive for that as much as possible. But I would say, at the same time, Steve, I would say that it's, it's also important that all of the organizations in all these communities apply for the funding. This is funding that is transformational. It's not been available before. Again, when I was on the Hall Prime Foundation, I saw directly the amount of demand there is for support for not-for-profits. It far outstrips the available resources. So anything we can do to encourage those that need help to apply and then be, be reviewed by this group or other not-for-profit organizations that provide funding, I think that's incumbent upon all of us. We know it exists. We should make sure they apply. But, but absolutely, there's no question we need to keep that top of mind.
Thank you.
Todd, do you have any sense what the Gaming Commission is going to be most interested in as, once they start evaluating the applications? And maybe, maybe that's a roundabout way of asking, what are the critical pieces of information that have to go into the application? Do you have any visibility to that yet?
You know, Grant, I really don't. I can tell you that, I should step back and tell you that I, I started attending the Racing and Gaming Commission meetings in 2021. That's when I first joined this board. And I have been so impressed by their, their focus on regulation, on maintaining the high-quality, high-quality gaming industry in the state of Iowa. It's highly regulated. They take it very seriously. So it's very, so they do an excellent job, in my opinion, of really paying attention to what's going on. At the same time, I can't really speak for the commissioners. They're all, they're great people. I've met them all. They're really nice. I can tell you this much, the, the industry since we started this process 10, 15 years ago, I, gosh, probably, probably 20 years ago, when you really go back to the original vote in gambling in Lynn County. Since then, if you think about the, the amount of gambling available in the states that surround Iowa, Iowa has, generates a significant amount of revenue from game, from gaming as an industry. But now Nebraska's building casinos, and Illinois is expanding casinos, Minnesota's got more casinos. That's all competition for Iowa. That all affects revenue to the state of Iowa. So we would anticipate in 2021, when the, when the study was done at that time, as I recall, the net gain to the state of Iowa was something like $51 million in revenue annually by building a casino in Cedar Rapids. I don't know what the next study will show, but I would be surprised if that number's not larger, just because of the amount of competition being built in other states surrounding Iowa. So I would like to think that's a primary driver, but, but, but I'm sure that the P2E folks will be putting together a compelling argument for building that sort of operation here.
Thanks.
Todd, can you explain just briefly, so we have the operator and this contracted to operate it. What kind of terms does that, how guaranteed are we, how long that group stays with us? I mean, we've heard good things, that they're a great operator. Once they're in the community, if this gets approved and once they're in the community open, is there a length of time that that's a guarantee that they will operate?
Yeah, I guess I had to turn to my resource here, RG, who was more in tune with that detail. But as I understand it, they're not the operator, they're the owner.
Okay.
Correct.
Correct. I mean, I would have to say, been patiently, but the, they don't have any intention of it.
That's fair.
But there's no contractual obligation.
Yeah, there's no contractual obligation, but they, they've been working on this for a decade, for a long, long time. So I'm, I'm not familiar with the agreements or what their, what their agreements are with the city or in any of those things, but I can tell you that they're committed to it. I can tell you that they are ready to invest significant amounts of money to build a world-class facility, and I can't imagine they would do that and then not see it through. But I, but I can't speak for them. I don't know for sure.
Okay. Any other questions for my colleagues? So we're, we're looking at discussion and direction. So basically, we, you just, do we have consensus to, for the staff to move forward with the request? Do we need a vote, or is consensus enough here? How are my colleagues feeling?
I was just going to weigh in. This can be done informally, like we would do in any other situation where staff is seeking direction, which is just on consensus. If everybody, if nobody feels strongly in opposition, staff can write the letter. Otherwise, if you prefer to have a more formal vote, someone can make a motion directing staff to write a letter of support or to not write a letter of support.
Do any of you have strong feelings, or are you, is anybody opposed to staff moving forward with the letter?
Nope.
All right. The mayor's, the mayor's out of the conversation, so with us here. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate your help. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. That'll turn it back to the mayor.
All right, thanks. At this time, we have our second public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic. If anyone here is here to address counsel, please come forward.
Hi. Well, first, I'm Connie Hoskins, and do you need where, the address where I live? It's ten fifty South Twenty-Sixth Street here in Marion. And we just have an issue that we came to the meeting this last time, and I just hope it's really taking, taken seriously on what's been happening, you know, with the fireworks. But many surrounding communities do not allow full-blown fireworks in their neighborhoods. First, it's safety issue, and secondly, it's a fire hazard. And there were five house fires that were deliberately set because of the fireworks landing either on their roofs or someplace within proximity, and we, we shouldn't have to put up with that. But I've talked to several military vets, and they hate the fact that they have to be traumatized by all the loud booms and the noises that the fireworks create. And Marion is allowing this to happen to our vets, and that shouldn't be. They can't get away from it, and we owe our citizens, our vets, families with small children and pet owners, the respect and safety I think we all deserve. And we have, you know, it'd be like us throwing debris into your yards, because we have debris all over. And it's on our roof, it's on, it's in our yard, it's in our air conditioning unit, and we shouldn't have to pay to have that taken care of, because we can't do a lot of that ourselves. And so I'm sure none of you would appreciate having someone come in and throw debris on your yards or on your roof that you have to clean up from somebody else's mess. You know, we're tired of it, and it shouldn't happen. And I'm just here to say, I really hope you take this seriously to ban the open, full-blown fireworks in neighborhoods. You know, there's so many organizations that put on fireworks displays that should be supported, but hardly anybody goes through anymore because they set off their own fireworks in our neighborhoods. And it's not only just our neighborhood, but it's all around. And so I would really hope that you would take, you know, into account the seriousness of it, the fire hazards of it, the safety of it, and the damage that it does. So, thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else here to address counsel, please come forward.
Good evening. Thank you for the privilege of being able to address you here. I want to, Connie's my partner. I live at one zero five zero South Twenty-Sixth Street. And we did attend two weeks ago, just before the fourth, and ask, or plead, or ask you to revise your fireworks policy. And since we've, I wanted to highlight two specific items about the fireworks policy that we've not addressed. These are more specific, but this is what we found, and we've got about nine or 10 of these, three hours of work, front yard, driveway, everywhere. It got on my Leaf Guard gutter filters, filters, at thirty-foot level. And when this thing starts to decompose from moisture, it gets gooey and it sticks. Can't be worse off, and we've got to pay somebody to come out and take those filters down, clean them, and put them back up. Our air conditioner right in the ground got about four inches of this stuff sucked right in. It's two years old, and technically, I can't take the screen off and clean them without voiding my warranty. But when I call a hand of plumbing and heating to clean it out, yeah, for $259, they're going to come out and do it themselves, because they don't just do a little bit. When they make a service call, they do the whole thing. So I'm thinking for this policy of my neighbors get the privilege of polluting my property, and I have to pay for it, and I don't think that's right. And secondly, I'd like to look at it from another economic standpoint, the insurance cost. I know mostly you probably read in the July seventh issue of the Gazette, they mentioned the four insurance companies that are starting to pull out of Iowa because, for home insurance because of the cost. Well, one of them's ours, so we had a meeting with them and talked to them about why our insurance cost is so high. Well, he said, the bad news is it's not going to get better, IMT. Our rates for Marion are going up 20% in three months. And he said, the interesting thing was if you lived in Cedar Rapids where you lived two years ago, it'd be about seven to nine percent less for, based on assessed value and the size of our home. And so I checked in with our previous one, AFI, and they said, yeah, yeah, Cedar Rapids insurance rates are much lower, he thought, 12% than Marion's. And then I recalled a conversation with Chuck Kent from State Farm years ago when we were living in CR, and he had to increase our rates, and he said, well, you're lucky you're not in Marion, because it'd be a lot higher. So I started to talk to our IMT agent there in Springville and said, what, what's driving this? And he said, well, it's overall the public environment. And I said, well, what do you mean? Well, part of it is the local governing authorities' policies, how they administer them, what they are. So I'm thinking, yeah, okay, one of those things for my home insurance, the run risk, is fire insurance. one of those things for my home insurance, the run risk, is fire insurance. And that, that kind of said, "Oh, yeah, well, since you guys have, since Marion has, allows fireworks, that's another factor, the coefficient factor that's increasing the risk factor of my home insurance." So it, the article in the Gazette said, you know, "These companies are pulling out." Well, IMT is no longer writing new policies in Iowa. They're not. And he said, "Right now, you're not at risk of failure to renew," but he said, "If things keep up with inflation and supply chain issues," he says, "we may pull out." So we've lost Pekin, we've lost Salina and Secura. So I don't know if the council wants to think about what happens if we lose IMT and a few more other insurers. What's going to happen to all the residents' home insurance costs here in Marion? So when I kind of look at it, I think your policy of allowing fireworks is helping to escalate my insurance cost. And I'd like to see a policy adopted from Marion, the council here, to say, "What can we do for our residents to make their economic livelihood less expensive and more comfortable?" And so I'm still advocating to have you revise your policy and prohibit them. And I'd like to conclude with one last thing. I don't know if, we live not too far from Menard, so we go past there, and they had the fireworks tent. And two days after the 4th, it said, "Buy one, get five free." And if you go down to the Old Town and Country, their fairway, they had another one. And I stopped in and talked to them, said, "Yeah, we're probably going to give them away, because we don't want to transport them back." So I said, "Well, what are people buying them for now?" He says, "Well, they're going to do, keep them in their basement or their home, so next year they don't have to pay the full rate." So I'm thinking about, well, if somebody has a couple thousand dollars worth of fireworks in their house, and they have a fire, and the fire department comes out, I wonder how safe that is for our firemen. And I'd like the council to think about that, you know? Firemen, you know, first responders, the people we depend upon, that's really critical. And so I don't see the purpose, the value of having a public fireworks display.
Thanks for your comments. We appreciate it. Just one, just one question, just one comment, though. It's important to understand that your example about people keeping fireworks in their homes that they bought at Town and Country or wherever they buy them, that, that, we have no say over that. The sale of fireworks is not within the purview of the cities. That is a state law that requires us to allow them to be sold. And so, just so you understand that, yeah.
Totally familiar with that, and I remember the Congress, the discussion in the State Assembly when that was going. My point is, people are buying them and storing here, because they know next year they can light them off in my neighborhood. And I get all of this stuff all over.
They're lighting them all.
It's me. You guys, you, council members, you've got to have this. If somebody's lighting them off in your place, look in your AC unit, see what's down there. Okay.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Anyone else to address council? I do, I do have a question about what, what, did we have fires, chief?
I was going to follow up with Ms. Hawkins afterwards. During the legal time of firing, we did not have any structured fires during that time. So I wanted to confirm just on the dates and that she was referring to, and if those were indeed in Marion. We, we had no reported structured fires during the legal time of, that is allowed within the city.
Anyone else to address council?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to, we have on our annual schedule to review fireworks code every April. So in April of 2025, we'll bring that up for discussion.
So that could be a time when council could decide to change the?
Correct.
Okay. All right. You have anything to add?
Just wondering, is there an opportunity maybe to move that review of that up from April to say, you know, shortly after the 1st of the year? Just so we're in the power curve time-wise, in case we do want to make a change. I, just, just a recommendation, if that's possible.
If there's consensus, we can move it to whenever council would like to discuss it.
Yeah, we can decide to address it. Okay. Anyone else? All right. Anyone else to address council? All right, we'll close the public forum and proceed to council comments. We'll start with council member Sternad.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. I do not have anything.
No, I don't think so.
Sarah?
Just two things. One, if you're out in the parking lot area of City Hall, check out the garden. Peg and Julie and the team have been doing an incredible job. It is, even in between the beds that they planted some things are growing like crazy. So I know they're working out, they're usually Mondays and Wednesdays. If you ever have questions on your own gardening, but we're very proud of that. All that food does go to the churches of Marion Food Pantry, and it's all done with our volunteers. But we're just out there to get some pictures Tuesday evening, and I'm just kind of blown away that even after the storm, how well they're doing, and I don't think our Groundhog family is living there anymore. They feasted really well last year. So hopefully we'll recover some of those. And then also say we're about halfway through Sunrise Yoga. That, great turnout for that. We had a beautiful morning on Saturday, and we'll be back on Saturday morning at 7:30 with a newer instructor to the community, so we're excited to see that. And then our Down Dogs in Uptown, which was the new yoga program, this is all through Be Well Marion, that we launched in June, had great turnout, over 30 people in attendance each of those Thursdays, and we are looking then to continue in September. So please join us on September and look for more information to be published soon.
Great. Nothing from me this evening, Your Honor. Steve? Okay, for my part, I want to congratulate everyone who had anything to do with the fireworks and fireflies. That was, again, a very tremendously successful event. You could just, it was just oozing community. And you could just feel the, the community pride and the happiness in the air as people were there enjoying that event, enjoying the music, and the, the, the organization and the setup was really, really well done. And it was, I don't know if we have a count on how many thousand people were there, but it just felt like a great community event, and just congratulations, again, to everyone involved with it. I know it takes lots of people from across all our departments, and volunteers, and community partners, and everyone pitching in to make it happen, and it was, it was a true moment of pride, I think, for our community. I also want to congratulate the Uptown District and all of their volunteers for another successful Eat, Drink, and Be Marion event that was last Thursday. Again, people from the entire region were there, just enjoying the shops and the amenities in Uptown. Again, very well done. I hope, I hope they raised a lot of money for Uptown Marion. Yesterday, last evening, I had the opportunity to speak to a group of about 80 people. Just an update on, on what's going on in Marion, is that periodically amassed you throughout the region. And it was, I'm always just so proud to share all our good news and all the progress we're making. And the people who are Marionites in the group were just so proud to have their, their city featured, and it's just, we've reached this point where people are so proud of their Marion address that you can just feel it. We hear about it every day, anywhere we go, we sense it, and it's just, it's become a lot of fun to, to know that we're making such great impact on people's lives, that they're proud to stay there from Marion, and then, and are eager to share what's happening in their city. Congratulations to the Chocolate Shop on their relocation to their new place, and the completion of the work in renovating, preserving a historic building. Wish them the best. And finally, we have Brooke Proudie here, who has been our Uptown Director. Brooke, Brooke took that organization, the Uptown District. Was it 11 or 12 years now that we've been affiliated with Main Street Iowa? And Brooke came in several years after we affiliated, and has really taken that organization to new levels. And she's just been a great partner. For me personally, when we were trying to save the church, she was a great partner. She's always been a willing partner. And, and the construction project of the street, the streetscape, Brooke was very instrumental in that. And I don't want to start naming things, because I think that will just under, undervalue what she means to us, because she's just been a great partner in every possible way, and in all the progress that we've made in this Uptown District. And we just want to wish her well. She's moving on to work for Main Street Iowa. She's going, she's going to continue living in the region, but travel across the state to share all the, all the good things she learned and all the experience she has now with other Main Street communities to help them to adopt the Marion way, I guess, and, and see some progress and prosperity in their, in their towns. So Brooke, thank you for everything you've done, and we wish you well. And I'm not going to cry, because I'm going to see you tomorrow, I'm sure. But we do, we do appreciate your role in Team Marion and everything that you've done, so, thank you. Oh, that's just, right. Okay, with that, enjoy the weekend, and the meeting is adjourned.